Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the January 13, 2020 meeting of the DeKalb City Council Committee of the Whole. I'd like to ask our city clerk, Lynn Fizikas, to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Finnucan.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
We have two items on the agenda tonight, two considerations, one is our State of the City, the other is a presentation by our lobbyist Patty Daly. Prior to that, we will add public participation if anyone cares to speak to public participation during the Committee of the Whole. If you are here for the City Council meeting, which begins at 6:00, and would like to speak to one of those items, you may want to wait until public participation occurs at that point. So with that being said, I entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda for the Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any discussion? Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Finnucan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
ADAC.
Thank you. Is there any public participation at this point during the Committee of the Whole? If not, we will move right into the first consideration for the evening, and that is the State of the City address. North side, south side, east side, west side, all around the town. Tonight, as I present my annual State of the City, I thought it may be interesting to put a compass on the map and take a directional view, so to speak, on our community. Along the way, a few pictures may help. So let's start at the top of the map, the north. Some of our commercial growth has actually seen development of properties along Sycamore Road. The new Aldi is doing great business in what once was JCPenney. Adjacent to the grocery store is Planet Fitness, retrofitted from the former Carson's. Shopping centers along Sycamore Road seem to be ever-changing, a sign of the times as retailers and restaurants seek to adjust to buying patterns of our population. A bit further north, Northwestern Medicine's attractive wellness facility was followed this past year by new innovations in women's health with the new Breast Center. Residentially, traveling north on First Street is a tad smoother with this resurfacing job among the $1.7 million we were able to spend on roads in 2019. Now, you know, we shouldn't be spending $5 million a year, so we're asking our Public Works crews to do the best job they can in filling, in patching, and striping. We may have a few additional dollars during this year with a major resurfacing planned for the heavily-traveled north Seventh Street between East Lincoln Highway and Sycamore Road. Now, in clockwise fashion, let's take a look at our east side. I'm going to keep my comments on our airport abbreviated tonight due to our lobbyist Patty Daly's report immediately following this State of the City. I continue to view this facility as a key to DeKalb's future growth, and with help from a variety of fronts, federal, local, state, our airport can become a true regional transportation asset. Now, as we look towards the east, we're traveling beyond Peace Road, all the way to Albert. Thanks to the ongoing progress involved in the consolidation of the Husky and Transvac bus systems, we have embarked on daily service to the Metro West train line. This should prove beneficial to students and townsfolk alike. And speaking of Peace Road, Park 88 continues to anchor two of our largest employers, 3M and Target, and with council approval recently of new lot zoning along the park's eastern boundary, we're hopeful that additional industrial development may occur soon. While admittedly, much of the business buzz has been centered on the Chicago West site, south of the tollway, we continue to focus on growth along Peace and Fairview Roads. As a matter of fact, one of our plans along Fairview is a new bike path running from South Seventh to Peace, so stay tuned for that. Also on Peace, just across the airport on Pleasant Street, the site approved for our first potential cannabis dispensary. Now, I cautiously say "potential" because the rollout of the marijuana market is primarily in the hands of the state. My best bet for a dispensary opening here in DeKalb is early summer. So those are a few of the happenings north and east. Let's turn again clockwise to the south. Look familiar? Yes, we're keeping our municipal fingers crossed as we await a decision on whether our hard work results in a major new employer on this site at Route 23 and Gerler Road. Much has been reported on how significant this could be to our local, really, our county-wide I cannot begin to express how pleased I am with our partnering taxing districts. All came aboard following City Manager Nicholas's tax abatement proposal, which was critical to moving forward on this project. Hats off to developer Jerry Krasinski, who has taken a major leap of faith in moving dirt early on, and to Paul Borick and the DeKalb Economic Development Corporation, and to State Representatives Jeff Keiker and Tom Demmer for their tremendous help. And looking southward, while not necessarily a municipal government issue, it's heartening to see our park board's decision to keep both River Heights Golf Course on the south and Buena Vista on the north open. There has been considerable dialogue on this subject. From my personal point of view, having two quality facilities like River Heights and Buena is simply nothing more than an indication of this community's quality-of-life assets. And as things progress in our southern neighborhoods, we may very well see a solar farm along Gerler Road and further commercial development on South Fourth Street. Now, let's head west. Northern Illinois University, celebrating its 125th anniversary this year. A proud institution, as much an integral part of DeKalb as is the rich farmland on the campus's very western edge. NIU and DeKalb are indeed joined at the proverbial hip in education, in safety, in transportation, in housing, in entertainment, list, list, can go on and on. I honestly believe cooperation between the city and the university has rarely been better. And we do not use the term "communiversity" lightly. Even when problems arise, the leadership team of President Lisa Freeman works to engage City Hall in working things out, and we pledge to keep it that way. The Annie Glidden North Project, started over two years ago, is progressing with better lighting, a new Safe Streets Initiative, an exciting plan for Welsh Park redevelopment, and the establishment of a fresh food hub, working alongside DeKalb County Community Gardens. We need to maintain steadfast our efforts to engage the newly-formed Community Development Corporation to finance this area's revitalization. We're excited at the potential of the development of the $22.9 million Northern Illinois Center for Sustainability, planned to be built on the western edge of the university campus. This could prove to be huge for NIU's collaboration with the University of Illinois system and with the regional economy as well. Along Annie Glidden Road, this new hotel development is progressing. It should prove to be a welcome addition to what many feel is still a growing need in our community, quality hotel and motel accommodations. Commercial and retail continues to evolve along West Lincoln Highway, some businesses growing, and a few go out of business, too. It's the nature of the beast, my friends, and to expect every business to succeed forever is simply unrealistic. But I can tell you that City Hall will continue to perform in the most business-friendly posture possible, something that we've worked very, very hard during the past couple of years to accomplish. So we've moved north, east, south, and west, and some points in between. At the center of all this is the core of our community, our downtown. Over the past year, I cannot count the number of folks, locals, and visitors alike, who have remarked to me how downtown DeKalb is changing. Cornerstone, Plaza DeKalb, and the Egyptian Theater. For sure, we have new apartments, new and improved businesses like Jamra, Stage Left, and a summer grand opening at our remarkable old lady, the Egyptian Theater. Add to these improvements will be the upcoming construction of the Agora Tower, a Pappas Development project on what many still call the Mooney Property at Fourth and Locust. There it is. It became just a pile of rubble after the old car dealership was demolished, but should look like this in a year or two. Having said that, we still have far too many empty storefronts downtown, and we're going to continue to work with realtors and developers to attract new owners and tenants. One of our steps to improve that core is the planned move of City Hall to a sturdy structure that has indeed passed the test of time. We plan to begin City Hall move to this venerable location within the next few months. Concurrent with that, we will put the building in which we're sitting right now, our municipal building, on the market. In actuality, we'll be putting this entire block up for sale. We believe it may be quite attractive to prospective developers. Our move will be a viable and a visible sign that your government believes in its downtown, a downtown that will regain prominence in vitality, in activity, in entertainment, in becoming a destination for residents and visitors alike. Now, before I close our geographical tour, allow me a few minutes to report on some other important State of the City topics. Just a year ago, on January 12, I said that perhaps our major challenge as 2018 came to a close was to find a leader, a city manager, who could provide the skills and professionalism needed to move this city forward. We found one in Bill Nicholas. Let me say now what I said, and these were my exact words a year ago. Quote, "Bill Nicholas will do what this mayor and what our city council has asked him and expect him to do: lay the groundwork, bolstered with a realistic budget that will allow us to manage this city effectively. It will not be easy." End quote. Tonight, I can say that during his first full year on the job, our city manager has worked as hard as anyone I've ever seen work, days, nights, weekends. He's done it because he, like this city council, is indeed bullish on DeKalb. And it hasn't been easy. Among his challenges has been to downsize and reorganize our core of department heads. Hi, guys. He now is a team that is working hard, working additional man-hours to see that their areas of responsibility are being carried out. I'm very proud of all these folks, most of whom are with us tonight. Our city manager shares this mayor's emphasis on two areas, public safety and economic development. We're making progress, I believe, on both fronts. We're certainly not where we need to be on the public safety front, but we're making good progress. A major roadblock to that progress has been difficulties in dealing with this city's largest landlord. Tonight, I'm heartened by Hunter Properties' new willingness to work with our city staff to address many of the issues in housing, like those at 808 Ridge Brook, which was condemned for nearly six months after a fire displaced 150 residents. It appears that 808 may soon be reopening. We need to push forward in seeing that our housing market stresses quality. The majority of this community's landlords are doing just that. In addition, we'll continue to condemn and hopefully tear down housing stock and commercial properties like former movie theaters that have fallen into disrepair. Thanks to the state of Illinois, the recent legislation to consolidate municipal pensions will be of some assistance as we struggle, as a community, as a municipality, to live up to our commitment to those who have served. Locally, we have 14 boards and commissions comprised of residents who volunteer their time to advise city staff and council on a variety of topics, whether it be making this a welcoming city for the diverse population we serve, or advocating for things like public art, or electric automobile stations, charging stations, or urging less restrictive ordinances that simply stand in the way of common sense. I tip my hat to all who serve as commission members. I simply cannot mince words when I say that we must own up to our own shortcomings and celebrate the many successes we have here in the city of DeKalb. So whether it be banners along Locust Street heralding our veterans, or the new pathway connecting Prairie Park to the NIU Lagoon area, or events like Music at the Mansion, or the DeKalb Corn Fest 10K race, or the efforts of our Chamber of Commerce and the Tourism and Visitors Bureau, or the work now being undertaken to assure that our 2020 census counts each and every resident, and that begins in March. I'm darn proud if you call me DeKalb's number-one cheerleader. It's a great experience being your mayor. I'm so pleased with this contingent of six men and a woman who make up the DeKalb City Council. This group rocks. Let's keep the momentum. I'm now anxious to hear from Patty Daly, with whom I visited in Washington a couple of months ago. As we visited legislative offices of our representatives and senators, our focus was on three arenas in which federal assistance may help the city: airport, food hub, transit center. I know Mrs. Daly is prepared to spend most of her allotted time on the airport tonight, but I respectfully ask her to spend a few minutes on the food and transit issues. Once again, thank you for your attention. It's been a privilege to present this 2020 State of the City. Thank you very much. Thank you. And now, we move along to our second consideration tonight. Patty, come on up if you'd actually come to the podium. This is a consideration of a presentation from the Daly Policy Group regarding federal support for the city's Airport Transportation Improvement Program. May I proudly introduce our lobbyist from Washington, Patty Daly. Patty, hi.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, staff that I met earlier today, thank you very much for your time, and everyone in the community of DeKalb. It's nice to be here. It feels like old home for me. It's been a true pleasure, over decades, of knowing the city and having the opportunity to have someone call me and say, "Can you talk to us and see if we can work together on something that we worked on 20 years ago?" So I'm very pleased to be back here, and thank you very much. Very much appreciate it. So as you had mentioned, I've been asked to provide you an update, legislative update, as to what we've been doing on the airport, and then we will also talk about the other two projects. And first, I would like to back up and just tell you, I have four family members that actually went to school here in DeKalb, so there's a great deal of my own home pride of coming here again and seeing everyone, having that opportunity to do something and help work to grow something within this community. And with that being said, as you mentioned before with the airport, we are currently working with the FAA and also the regional FAA here in Illinois. What we have been doing, and I will say, I know the mayor through our meetings when you were here in Washington, we met with our delegation, which was strongly supportive of the airport. We are very fortunate to have a delegation that, not only through the leadership of your Congresswoman and also the Congressman, both your senators. When the mayor came out to DC, I had mentioned, "We're going to meet with one other Congressman," and it's an interesting story that ties DeKalb and Chicago together. And so we're going to meet with Congressman Lipinski. And so I explained to him, Congressman Lipinski's father had been a very large, big supporter of the airport many years ago when we were looking to extend the runway. And so when we moved forward, the congressman had retired, and his son became congressman, put on the committees that were appropriate for both innovation and transportation, and we started to forge that relationship again. So it was very nice that through the years, when the mayor came out to DC, we were able to meet with the key members of our delegation, but also to have a person on the actual committees that are relevant to the airport in terms of their funding, as well as their infrastructure needs, and that is our congressman from Chicago. The Congresswoman is very, very supportive of this project as a whole delegation. She has been truly the leader moving forward on what our needs are, understanding it, as well as the congressman, and have, what I would like to say is, said to the mayor and I a few months ago, "They are supporting us and willing to put that in writing as we move forward with the 2021 budget, which we will be working on in February. It should be released in about the second week of February. The administration will release the FY 2021 budget. That will be the working document that we will use with our delegation in terms of securing funding through programmatic dollars for the airport." And I'll explain that in terms of what the programs are and how we are proceeding with that. With the airport, historically, we've always looked at airport improvement funds in connection also and concert with the state dollars. Occasionally, we will have an end-of-the-year discretionary spending as well. We've had that in previous years. We're hoping that, hopefully, we can look at 2021 as an opportunity through it being an election year that, historically, there's additional funding that will be put in a budget for transportation. And we are hearing that same exact rumor mill, that 2021, there will be additional dollars put in transportation specifically for infrastructure, roads, and airports. So I'm pleased to announce and tell you that that's what we're hearing thus far, that they're going to be dedicating more towards communities in terms of infrastructure, road projects, as well as airport needs. What we will be looking at doing is not only working with our delegation, but also with the FAA in headquarters, as well as the region. Headquarters, we met with recently, the mayor and I, and it was very productive. They understood the needs. They gave us great advice in terms of how to proceed with what we need to do in the coming year, and how the discussion between the region and the state is so significant. And I know I'm probably repeating myself to some of those that know the airport quite well through the years and know the region, but if we don't have support from the state and if the state is not looking at our five-year plan, then it's very difficult to proceed with anything at the federal level. So we do work hand-in-hand with both the region and headquarters. To that, I will state that we are going to be meeting with the region, hopefully, in the next month. Tom Cleveland and I are arranging a meeting to go over our requests, our plans, and our funding. We are looking at a phased approach. I know you have all discussed this as a city council in terms of how to proceed with the airport, what the cost is, and the reality of how we can implement that. So we are looking at 2021 and 2022. If there is anything in terms of additional funding at the end of the year for 2021, we will aggressively proceed with that as well. But currently, right now, we are going to be looking at the AIP program for 2021 and 2022. Our senators are both very supportive of it as well. We have five key members of the delegation that are willing to put that in writing and sign off on a letter of support as we submit our request for those fundings for 2021, as we define the budget. And I don't want to jump ahead, but as we define the 2021 budget, and it goes through both chambers, the House and the Senate. So I wanted to give an overview first, as you mentioned, Mayor, of the airport, and then move on to the transit and food bank issue. I think I'll stop and see if there's any questions related to the airport or how we're proceeding in terms of our strategy. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Do any Aldermen have any questions at this point of Patty on the airport itself, in what we've done, she reported on, on the airport? If not, if you'd make a few remarks on the transit center and on the food hub also.
Absolutely. The Transit Center is a very interesting concept that I was briefed on by staff, as well as the mayor. And again, it is an intermodal initiative, as I understand it, and that is something that's very appealing to the Department of Transportation. We did meet with the Department of Transportation. I did speak to them last week as well regarding what the budget is and how we're moving forward on programmatic dollars. Right now, for this project, and I did meet with your staff earlier on this, the program that, the primary program that we'd be looking at is the Build Grant, and that is going to be announced in about two and a half weeks, and that was directly from the Department of Transportation. So that will be our first program that we will submit for because that traditionally has a good increase in federal dollars to partner with any local project. We also were able to identify two other programs that we could move forward with. In addition to the Build Grant, we will also be working on an INFRA, and it's shortened for "infrastructure," but INFRA grant, and that also has a key component because that is how the administration has been able to fund projects within the budget, but not necessarily within the budget of the agency. Putting funds into programs and giving them a little bump up is trying to basically help the community, even though we have had a difficulty in passing budgets. the community, even though we have had a difficulty in passing budgets through the last several years. We did pass our 12 bills right before Christmas, so 2020 was done, now we're on to 2021, and that's what we're looking at right now in terms of these programs. So the second program would be the INFRA program. That gives us a little more latitude also in terms of the definition and the scope in which you can apply for. It's a larger interpretation of road projects, so we have the opportunity to apply for that, not only for a mass center, mass transit center, but as an example, if there was something on the perimeter of the airport from a surface transportation issue, we would be able to apply for that as well. And we continue to look at that. If that, if that issue appears that we need something to complement the services at the airport along the perimeter, we would be able to apply for that as well. And then the third, the third program that we would be looking for, and let me back up and tell you that, all three of these you can apply for, and they, within one year. So we're not, we're not in a situation restricted by only one program per year. So we're going to aggressively pursue all, all the initiatives that the mayor and your staff have outlined. We're, we're proceeding with every grant possible that we can look at, every program that's going to have an increase of funding. So for this particular project, we're working on a Build Grant, which, again, will be announced in two, two to three weeks, as I indicated. The INFRA, which is going to be springtime. And the third, the third one, it's a, it's a little different in terms of, it's a rolling application. So that's the benefit of various grants, when you can look at transit grant, mass transit, transit. Of course, we would apply for that, because it's right in the heart of what you want to do. And the grant itself is a rolling application, which means, once we get everything we want in terms of the definition of the project, the timeframe of the project, we can apply for it, whether it is two months from now or four months from now. So that gives us a little more wiggle room, if you will, in terms of prioritizing what you want and how we would proceed with this particular project. So we do have those three grants that we will look for in terms of this mass transit project that has been outlined to me as well. So I know that's several different programs, and again, I would open it up if you have any questions related to those programs or proceeding with that project.
Anything on transit that you might have for Patty? I have a few, but I think I'll wait until you address the food hub situation.
Sure.
I know you met with Dan today, so.
I did, and, and thank you, by the way. That was wonderful to hear, and I think it's, it's a great program, and I hope that the District of Columbia looks at what others are doing in terms of addressing the needs and issues of those that are in need, and education, in terms of nutrition. It's so critical, it is so needed, desperately needed in so many communities. And I think what we are looking at right now could be scalable in any community, any community that has university relationships. This is something that is definitely on the platform at the federal level. There's more funding going to hunger and homelessness in the last two years than I've seen in several years. So the timing is good for this project, primarily because there are going to be programs that are going to continue on this, this fiscal year 2021, as it relates to hunger, education, nutrition, and I believe that those are the programs we want to look at to complement what has been outlined in this particular program.
Okay, I'm going to throw a few questions out, Patty, and these are things that I think you and I have talked about. First of all, I'd like to say that when I, it was my first visit to Washington, and while I had met a number of the legislators, I did not have a chance to meet as many of the staff as I did when I was there. And they were very, very receptive, but it was so helpful to have somebody like Patty aboard, because when, when I walked into the office, nobody knew me, but they knew this woman, and she's been around the proverbial block, if you will, in Washington for, what, 30 years? Something like that.
You're showing my age now.
Yeah. So it was very, very helpful. As it relates to the, the airport, again, I think we, we visited every legislative office, plus a transportation and the FAA, as, as you had indicated, and Mr. Lipinski's My, my question is, what was your sense of how those three issue areas that I, that I had identified when I came to Washington, how did those resonate, in your opinion, with, with the legislators? And what, what can we continue to do to make sure that we are on their front page, if you will?
Sure. Traditionally, with all the members, transportation is always going to, you know, first and foremost, because they want to make sure their constituents are getting the infrastructure that they need, and that is a program and an agency that tends to have a little more funding, if you will, at times, and it has more equal distribution in terms of the ability for those to apply and, and receive funding. I would say that both senators, obviously, are very familiar with our airport, as well as Congressman Lipinski, and I believe the other two Congress, the Congresswoman and the Congress gentleman, both indicated that they were very familiar with it and wanting to be the leaders in trying to secure funding for us for 2021. So I would say that would be their top priority to, to be, you know, on, on spot with our priorities. I think the mass transit center is another one that's very appealing, primarily because we use words in DC and acronyms in DC every day that probably 80% of the people in Washington DC don't know what they are, or don't really completely fulfill those obligations at times. And intermodal is one that really defines this project. And so it definitely piqued the interest of everyone when you were saying a transit center that actually has the ability to do fueling, do all the options that most communities have not been able to do, that are medium-sized, small-to-medium-sized communities, rural to urban. They haven't done it. They really have not put the idea, they've put the idea out there, but they've not been able to fulfill it. And I believe that this project, through my discussions with staff and the members, definitely is a priority as well.
One of the things that piqued the interest of the offices as we visited, based on the success that we had with Adam Kinzinger coming out here and getting on that bus, taking a little bus tour around, we invited each and every one of the legislators to come out and, and do that, and Representative Underwood has indicated that she'd like to come out, Marcus, what, in February or March?
Yeah, March or April.
Yeah, March or April. And we've obviously extended that same invitation to Senator Durbin and Senator Duckworth, and, and it was interesting to me how some of the offices seemed to be more interested in, in one of the areas than the other, but as you, as you suggest, they all seem to be very, very interested in, in hearing about, about DeKalb, and hearing about the university, and, and many of the things that, that we have going on here in, in our fair city, so.
Well, and I, I will jog your memory on this, because both Senator Durbin's office and Congress, Congresswoman Underwood's office was, were very interested in, in the food bank.
Mm-hmm.
They liked the collaboration. They looked at the issue of addressing two needs at once, and so it definitely piqued their interest and curiosity as to how to proceed with it. And if you recall, in Senator Duckworth's office, I think they would have kept you there another hour talking about this.
Oh, yeah, we could have spent another hour there, yeah. And they had, they had two or three representatives, I think, there.
They did.
The gentleman who was the, the main guy there in the office, can't remember his name, but it was very, very good. Okay, anybody have any comments regarding not only what Patty has said tonight, any questions, but any observations regarding the fact that we do now have a lobbyist in Washington? And I think we, as a council, need to be very, very cognizant of the fact that she's there, and if we see arenas in which we feel that she might be helpful, I think it's incumbent on us, all of us as a team, to, to let her know. And Alderman Morris?
Sure. I just wanted to say thank you so much, Patty, for your hard work on behalf of our community. I have a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
I wanted to ask, so generally speaking, who are we competing with? Is this all a national competition? You know, how many of these grants go out? And, you know, what are the odds of our success?
So for the airport, we compete with other general aviation facilities. So we're not dealing with primaries or, or other large airports. We're dealing with aviation facilities that are actually general aviation facilities. And I will say that with our project, Tom and I, a few months ago, actually met with some of the staff at the state level, updating them, because they do look at projects to complete. That's the other issue, because sometimes when you hear the competition, you know, that there are other projects involved, that's one issue. But I will say, in the last three years, I've never really seen projects be funded so quickly, because they want them off the books. It's more just getting things completed than anything else. And I think federal agencies, when they see a project that requires $4 million to finish something, they want to get it done, and they want to move on then to the next project that could be multiple years versus a two-year phase. It's just in their interests, and they can get that done, and then they can work with the state, looking at that five-year program, and see what are the projects then that are the bigger, more time-consuming. So I hope that answers in terms of the airport. Transit is a competition, definitely. It's open to all communities, but communities are defined within transit projects such as build, INFRA. Build and INFRA in particular, I would say, are the ones that you look at in terms of the population and the definition of the population. For instance, last year, the Build Grant looked at smaller communities under nine, under 100,000, and rural areas. And they really were focusing on farm communities. So that took thousands of applications down to, you know, a very small, select few. The year before that, they had it for larger communities, up to 2 million in population. We're seeing a shift, though, going back to the 100,000 range, under 100,000, between 50 and 100,000 for this year. So that's right in our sweet spot. And I, I believe that the primary reason that we continue to move in different populations and transportation is based on the fact that when we have midterms and four-year elections, the money can be spread to complete projects at a greater level when you lower the bar of the population. But I will add on that, on that particular note, not to down, diminish the issue of your census studies. It's very important to make sure that you're working on that census, because as you move into different grades, as we're just discussing, it puts you at a different level of competition. So you want to make sure that as your team that's working on your new census is moving forward with that, because some of that is moving rather quickly, and I'll be happy to talk to anyone that's working on that.
Carolyn, do you have another question?
That's it. Thank you so much.
Oh, absolutely.
Any other comments or any questions? With, with that, Patty, we thank you for coming to DeKalb and meeting with a number of our folks today. I know you spent a good share of the day. We appreciate what you're doing. This is sort of a reembarcation, if you will, for you, with a new cast of characters, and some of these people really are characters. But we, we appreciate your efforts, and please let us know, as we had talked earlier today, if we need to be more aggressive, if you will, on working with you. We need to do that. If we need to be less aggressive, or, you know, if I'm, if we're calling too much, and I hope we aren't, then, you know, let us know that also. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, and thank you very much for everyone's time.
That is our last consideration for this committee of the whole. We will address more items, obviously, during our city council meeting, which will start promptly at 6 o'clock. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this committee of the whole.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we adjourn this committee of the whole meeting of the DeKalb City Council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We are adjourned. City council begins promptly at 6:00 PM. Thank you.